Oh, okay.
Like I'm going to item.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Let's get this started. It is one thirty. This is the Oklahoma County Planning Commission, Room two oh four, one thirty P M., January sixteenth. Notice this meeting was posted on January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Call to order. Roll call Eric.
Yes, the members of the planning commission today are Mr. Rob Murray, Mr. Gary Jewell, Mr. Charles DeFury, Mr. Rob Talbot,
Here.
Ms. Denise Patterson, and sitting in for Commissioner Davidson is Tanner Broyles.
Tanner needs a name tag.
She does.
Oh.
She comes to many meetings.
Cool. All right. Item number four, approval of minutes of the previous meeting. Everybody got a copy of the minutes? Is there any updates? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Roll call Eric.
Mr. Murray, Mr. Jewell, Mr. DeFury,
Yes.
Mr. Talbot,
Yes.
Ms. Patterson,
Same.
Ms. Broyles.
Yes.
Okay. Item number five, discussion and possible action to approve slash deny the general plat of Cambridge Estates, G P twenty twenty four dash eighteen. Eric?
Yes, before I get started in the discussion, I would like to hand out some letters of protest. That way you guys can look at these as we're going through the process of discussion.
We get a motion to accept the letters of protest? Second. Accept, yeah. Roll call Eric.
Mr. Murray, Mr. Jewell, Mr. DeFury,
Yes.
Mr. Talbot,
Yes.
Ms. Patterson,
Yes.
Ms. Broyles.
Yes.
All right. They're in. Now what do you want to tell us?
So, this application, just to kind of go into the history of the application, I know Mr. Jewell is new to the board and Ms. Broyles may not be familiar with this particular case. So originally, the item was before this board back in October of twenty twenty two. No, I'm sorry. Is that right? Yeah, I think that's right. So at that time, the the board had denied it. At that particular time, what it was was just commercial. I'm sorry, I have to recall. It was just the commercial that was directly on the corner itself at that point in time. Time passed, moved forward, we came back in April eighteenth of twenty twenty four, and they proposed the following. At this time, it was a P U D that consisted of the residential that you see, but also contain the commercial corner that you see there in the northeast part of the diagram. This board, the planning commission, actually denied this P U D application. It moved forward to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners approved the P U D on April the eighteenth of twenty twenty four. So time again moved forward, and we are here today to discuss the general plat that you see before you. The general plat basically consists of a hundred and ninety-nine residential lots, and it is on approximately a hundred and ninety-two acres. The commercial corner is not part of the plat. They can come back later on if they would like to plat that. It's not a requirement that the county has. If they wanted to, they could go out there today and then start construction of any commercial uses that fall within the P U D if they so desire. As you can see, there was a couple of letters of protests. If you recall, there was there was quite a bit of protest when this development started, as far as the zoning. So I didn't know if you had any questions about the letters of protest or any questions for me. The development itself, basically, all those lots that you see are on half-acre lots. The only ones that are different are on the west side where the entrance is off of MacArthur. Those lots are two acres. Everything else is half-acre lots. They're going to have Deer Creek Water to the development itself. You may recall a discussion that we've had internally, the property that is to the south and west that actually faces the intersection of MacArthur and two oh six. There was a development that were the general plat stage of that development was in front of this body last month, Avalon Estates. And there was discussion internally to connect these two developments together. Unfortunately, we can't make that happen because Avalon Estates is going to be a gated community to where this particular development is not. So we did have some discussion as far as internal sidewalks, back to MacArthur, and we'll have further discussions as we move forward as possibly sidewalks getting to Rose Union, which is the elementary school that you see just to the west of this development here. But that's pretty much what they're asking for today is just the approval of the general plat, just the general concept that you see before you. If you had any particular questions of me or the letters of protest, I know there's one gentleman that is here to speak in regards to the letter of protest that he sent in as well. If you have any questions of me, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
I've got a question. So is it still half-acre lots?
That is correct.
And they're still going to have the aerobic where they're going to spray the wastewater on the on the yards?
That is correct.
Okay. Since you brought it up, we had a lot of discussion about those entryways and exitways. How does with now knowing that the community to the south is gated, how does that affect all that? And is this all up to county standards?
Yes, so you see there, the development has been separated by the pond that goes north and east that is closer to the east boundary of the property. So you see that they have two entrances there. One is off of Meridian and one will be off of Northwest two hundred and twentieth. So that suffices our requirements for that. The other half of the development that's west of that pond, you see there, there is one street that you have access to MacArthur itself. Now, there is a stubout that goes to the south to where if there's any future development to the south, they will be able to connect to that development. So that's also an access point. At this point in time, you could use it as emergency access out of the neighborhood if there is something substantial by or something along that line. Like I said, unfortunately, it just didn't work out to where we were hoping we could connect to Avalon Estates with this neighborhood vehiculally, but also pedestrian-wise. Just unfortunately, that didn't work because it's a gated subdivision, but if that did work, you would probably see a connection to that particular neighborhood instead of what you see before you. But if that property to the south where that connection is there ever develops, we have the ability to connect those neighborhoods together. So that is another point of access, even though it's not off a main road.
And I don't know if this is too early, if I put the cart in front of the horse, but are we entries and exits? Are we going to have entry lanes and exit lane? Are you off of MacArthur and two hundred and twentieth, or they're not necessary?
As far as D cell and X cell lane?
Yeah, I guess that's.
Right, that's something that we look at on every plat. It's based on the the speed limit of the road. So they will have to provide that information to us in the preliminary plat stage. Another thing, since we're talking about future considerations, they will have to do a traffic impact study because of the number of lots that are involved. So that's something that you'll see at the preliminary plat stage to see what other requirements may be involved because of the commercial corner, the number of lots, just the other land uses that are out there currently.
And on the west side, that's going to empty into MacArthur, and that's going to empty right into the school zone. Do we require a sign or something at the exit and entrance to let people know about the school zone? And if that's the case, is that going to, I don't, I can't really tell from the drawing, but is the east side going to empty into the school zone, or is that going to empty past the school zone?
Well, I have to look at the school zone issue. Now, that's not a requirement that we have as far, because all residential streets to begin with are not posted at twenty-five miles an hour. So it's not something that we have in our regulations that would require them to put up an additional sign. Now, if it's something that the board would like to see, we can have that discussion as as they go through the preliminary plat if this is approved. As they go through the preliminary plat as far as those calculations, all the design of the actual subdivision. Like I said, we we've just had a preliminary discussion as far as connecting the sidewalks of this neighborhood to MacArthur itself, having a sidewalk on the east side of MacArthur that will connect to the neighborhood of the south, Avalon Estates. And then from that entrance, there's some discussion of putting up a crosswalk at that point on the north side of that entrance to where the kids can cross at that point. Now, there is a there is a sidewalk on the west side of MacArthur as you get on that side. So if it's something that we can have a discussion, but like I said, residential streets are should be twenty-five miles an hour. They're not posted to begin with.
Eric, questions to the rest of members of the commission? My apologies for stepping late. I had another meeting. And if this has been addressed already, please let me know. But is this Deer Creek Water District?
Correct, correct.
Is there any concern from anybody regarding the the size of the lots and the number of homes going in there, given it is Deer Creek Water District?
I mean, that was a the the lot sizes that are presented, that was a big issue when they were going through the rezoning process. So now that the property is rezoned to that, because this body at that particular time, they denied the rezoning request to the P U D that you see before you. But the Board of County Commissioners came back and overturned that decision and approved the P U D back in April of of last year. So sure, there is there is concern, but at the same time, the Board of County Commissioners moved forward with approval. So just something to keep in mind as we move forward. But yes, there's definitely concern from the property owners that are out there. That was that was one of the big hangups of of some of the folks that live out there, you know, the additional traffic that this is going to generate from not only the residential, but the commercial corner itself. So there were some lengthy discussions at at this meeting and the Board of County Commissioners meeting when it was up for their review and vote.
Yeah, I've got a question, Eric. Or maybe maybe it's a question for our council with Lisa. Maybe it's a question for you. So I I don't like the idea of the aerobic where where, you know, a half-acre lot where it goes against the the planning. But is it sort of a moot issue? I mean, if the county commissioners approved the rezoning, and so if they say, hey, it's fine, you know, half-acre lots, aerobic, you know, spray the wastewater on the yards. So then, I guess, would my vote even matter if if, let's say I, let's say I I was to vote and say, no, I don't, I I'm going to disapprove this because I don't like the the idea of the aerobic systems on the half-acre lot. Is it sort of like a moot, my vote wouldn't really count anyway?
Well, I I don't think that's really what it would be. I mean, I understand you're saying that what is the motion, the item here, that is up for reconsideration. Is this something that, or is this something that you invested a big amount of the law?
So is. Right, so we, the county. Right, so we, the county, we don't have any oversight when it comes to wastewater and how that's treated one way or the other. Now, the state, the Department of Environmental Quality, they have regulations that are in place. So as an example, their regulations are if you have a three-quarter acre lot or larger, according to their standards, you can have a traditional septic or an aerobic system on a water well. In this particular case, the reason they're going half-acre or some of these lots are a little bit larger is because the state allows them to do that. The state has a requirement, if you are half-acre and you have access to a public water system, which in this case is Deer Creek Water, the state allows this to occur. So there is additional oversight as far as this particular scenario that's in front of us.
So who who would, let's say, inspect the aerobic systems? Is is there any inspection of those or?
Sure, absolutely. To to your question is is whenever someone builds a house out here, they, part of our building permit requirements is plans, all of that associated, but they also have to give us a standard form from D E Q letting us know what type of system is out there and the capacity of that system. So basically, that starts with the installer, whoever the property owner decides to hire to install the system. They go out there, they do the necessary testing. Those installers are licensed by the state. So they can't even do this work unless they're licensed through D E Q to begin with. D E Q gets this information from the installer. The property owner then brings us that information or the builder, whoever it may be, they bring us that information as part of our building permit requirement. So we know what is being placed out there before anything is turned as far as dirt.
Okay, so so as far as the maintenance goes, that's up to the.
That's up to the property owner. That's right.
And if somebody doesn't do their maintenance and the neighbor complains, that's what do they do then?
So if the neighbor, if there's any faulty system, somebody's not maintaining it properly, D E Q is the authority to contact. We we've ourselves, we get phone calls from the general public that somebody in a particular subdivision, or if it's on just a regular piece of land, they will contact us, letting us know that there's an issue. We then turn around, we'll contact D E Q ourselves. They say, we have an issue with a particular aerobic system potentially or septic system, whatever it may be. And they will log our call. They will go out there. They will take a look at the situation, and they will report back to us if there's an issue or not. If there's an issue, it falls under the state's enforcement to rectify that issue. It needs to be a new system put in or cleaned up, whatever the whatever the solution is. The state works with the property owner to deal with that issue.
Now, another question. Why are our regulations more stringent than the state regulations? So if the state is saying three-quarters of an acre and we're saying half-acre, why, I mean, why, why are we going more strict on that?
So the the three-quarters that you mentioned is where you get into the separation between a water well, an individual water well, a private water well, and a public water system. So that's not, that's not us. That's the state. We're not being any more strict. So once you go below the three-quarters, so let's say all these lots were seven-tenths of an acre, then they would still have to follow the same requirement. All these lots would have to be on Deer Creek Water if they want, right.
They are.
And they would, and if they want to use an aerobic system, that's fine. They're within the within the boundaries of the state law to do that.
Okay, but they're not in compliance with our planning commission. But if it's overridden by the county commissioners, then our our master plan doesn't, and our regulations don't really matter.
Well, what I'm saying is our regulations meet up with the states. So we're not any different than the state when it comes to this requirement.
So, okay, let's back up. So our planning regulations allow aerobic on half-acre lots. Is that right?
That is correct. In this particular case, this is a P U D. So is there is a written document that the applicant provided that basically stated the lot sizes that they planned. And so that document acts as the zoning for this particular piece of property. And so when the Board of County Commissioners, even though this board denied their rezoning request, obviously, you guys are a recommending body, they move forward to the Board of County Commissioners. Yeah, and so when that document's approved, that's what we move forward with at that point in time.
So not to cut the conversation off, but just the basically, anything that they're coming to us and is is approved is acceptable, you know, from the state. Because they wouldn't get, you wouldn't, you would put a stop to it before it got to us. We wouldn't even vote on it if it wasn't up to standard.
Right, or we would at least inform you if there's an issue, we would let you know what that issue is, and then you you guys would make the decision on moving forward or not.
And from our perspective, even if I, just talking about me, if I don't agree with it personally, it doesn't really matter because the rules and regulations allow it, even though I may not agree with it, correct?
Right, as it stands today, that is correct. It's it's zoned for that purpose. And and like I said, this is an item, when it went through the rezoning, was very contentious.
Now, let's talk about the water real quick. The same thing, too. We don't control the water. They actually petitioned or got a contract from Deer Creek Water for they said that they could supply it. That's all we need to know. We don't care if there's five units, five thousand units. That's Deer Creek's water decision, not ours.
Correct. And so when they do the preliminary plat, if we get to that point, they'll go even the extra step of providing us the plans of where these lines are going to be located.
And not to open up a can of worms, but at this point, if, let's say, we deny this, this does not go to the county commissioners. This comes back to us.
That is correct.
And it stays with us until we approve it or some other action may happen.
Yes.
Okay. So at this stage, basically, the Board of County Commissioners are out of the picture. It's on our plate to make sure that we're doing what we're we're doing. And then the chips fall where they may, depending on what next steps. Everybody has their own options, and they can do deal with it from that point. So.
Eric, okay, just one more thing. Can you just refer me to the planning rules, the regulations as far as aerobic and the size of the lot, just so I can look at it?
Sure. So let's see here if I remember correctly.
But. Because I don't have these things memorized.
Oh, no. I, yeah, oh, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect you to.
It's like, look, look at how thick it is, okay?
Well, unfortunately, I do to some degree. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Eric, to a certain degree, not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you, Charles, but it has no bearing on what we're doing here. So that could be a conversation you and Charles have outside the meeting where you can show them that, correct?
Sure.
Okay, so why don't we do that for the sake of time? We just keep moving forward, and you can show that to Charles after the meeting.
Sure.
Well, okay, I'm I'm looking to answer the question. I mean, you know, we're, okay, we've been here like twenty-one minutes, twenty-two minutes. Do we have to like rush out of here right away?
No, but it doesn't have a, it doesn't, but but that question doesn't have a bearing on what we're deciding today, is my point. If it had a bearing on what we were deciding today, we'll we'll talk about it. I would, I get that, and I would like to know a lot of things, too. But again, it doesn't have any bearing on what we're doing here today. So for now, we need to move forward, and you can continue this conversation with Eric afterwards. If it did have a bearing, then we will talk about this till ten o'clock tonight if we had to. But for now, I we we move forward. So is there any other questions for Eric?
My my question, and the aerobic system does, that's all over the place, small lots, smaller lots than this, but a water system. And so you see that everywhere, but mine is the fact that these are all half-acre lots. And was there a conversation with the county and the developer engineers? And why go with just a half-acre lot? Why not go with it? We looked at last last month at just north of here, that was all one-acre lots or larger. And it seemed to pass here easily. And so is that a conversation?
Sure, it was a conversation that was had. You have to look at the development as a whole. I think is the, and I'm just kind of conferring my own opinion here, but if you look at the the development as a whole, you have basically a hundred and ninety-nine residential lots on a hundred and ninety-two acres. So at the end of the day, sure, you, these are half-acre lots, but at the end of the day, if you look at the common areas and you include all that in this calculations, you're really pretty close to one home per one acre. So you, right, I I I know what the what the concern is, and then I understand that. But you have to look at this this picture as a whole when it comes to that aspect of it.
Well, if we're looking at the whole, the west side position, it only has one street that actually goes out to Main River. The other one is for proposed high-end building. The other property we looked at last month also had the same situation, but it was actually a proposed built out of the city, no, that was done, we already posed another street, the end of that street is already in the works, but there is nothing already in the works about this property.
So the the portion of this property, if you take where the school is and you go back west and you go south of this property, there was the development that this board looked at last month, Avalon Estates. And you're correct, that development, those were one-acre lots. If you want to, you can look at the agenda from the previous meeting. It should still be in your folder, if I'm not mistaken, from December. And you can see the development there. There is a picture of it. And so that particular development, what you're looking at in this particular case is ninety homes on almost a hundred and fifty acres. And so with that particular development, if you look at the picture that's provided, you have fairly large common areas, and the reason those common areas the way they are is because there's creeks that run through there. So, and that's kind of the same thing with this development here, the areas where you have water bodies in place, or I would assume a sizable amount of drainage that goes through are typically your common areas. And so that's kind of the same thing that you see in this development.
Hey, Eric, so is it page fifty of the subdivision regulations? Is is it, were it under B, individual wastewater lots served by septic tanks or onsite sewage facilities shall conform to standards established by O D E Q?
Yes, it's mentioned there, but then it's also mentioned in the zoning regulations on page ninety-two. So, yes, you're, we've covered that in both places. But you're 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 in the correct place because this is not a zoning case. It's a subdivision, right. So you're you're in the right place.
So like what you described before, D E Q says.
As long as they meet state requirements, we have to make sure. Right, in regards to that discussion.
Yeah, that answers my question. Thank you, Eric.
No problem.
Any other questions, Eric? And hearing none, is there anyone here like to talk a favor of this project? Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, David Box, five Tufog Northwest Eleventh Street. So I want to address a lot of your questions because they were, a lot of the questions really go to a zoning case. So when a case is being sought to be rezoned, you are engaged in what is a legislative process. At that time, this body, which is a recommending body, heard the P U D, and the P U D was recommended for denial. Me and the developers then went and met with Commissioner Davidson, visit with the other commissioners on what it was we wanted and why we wanted it. When we came to the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Davidson made a motion to approve, and the P U D and the legislative process unanimously rezoned this site to allow exactly what we seek to do now. As it relates to the size of lots, that is squarely a decision housed within the legislative process. When you come forward with a plat, and here a general plat, what the analysis looks like for the commission is, does it conform to the P U D? Does it conform to the subdivision regulations? And the answer to all those is yes. Everything that we have put forward on this general plat complies with every rule and regulation required of a general plat. Now, when you were referring to our regulations as it relates to lot sizes, my belief is you were talking about the conference of plan. The conference of plan is a policy document. It is not a regulation. It is a guideline and nothing more. State statutes tell us that, case laws tells us that. What it also tells us is that in the confines of a plat application, the regulations are what guide us. The conference of plan is a useful policy guide in the legislative process, not what we're in now, which is a quasi-judicial process. You as planning commission members sitting to hear a plat are engaged in a quasi-judicial process by which you are tasked. You as planning commission members sitting to hear a plat are engaged in a quasi judicial process by which you are tasked with analyzing, does the plaque comply with the regulations, meaning the approved P U D in this instance and the subdivision regulations? As your staff report tells you, all requirements from the general plat submitted have been met. So the answer to every single question is this landowner, this developer has complied with everything they could possibly be required to comply with. And so we would ask for your approval on those grounds.
Hey, I appreciate your expertise, Mr. Box.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this has nothing to do with that, but like my question earlier, like when this empties out, you know, that's a school zone. So it's normally thirty-five miles an hour, but during I think it's seven to four, it's twenty-five. How difficult would it be to just to put a sign at the entrance just so people know that between these hours? You know, as they're exiting, they're knowing that they're going into a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit instead of a thirty-five.
Yeah, it may not be hard at all. And what I suggest is perhaps at the preliminary plat stage, when we're closer to development, we look at that. But, uh, we'll have the the engineers take a look at that. I don't know how hard it is. It would seem to be terribly difficult, but there's likely going to be a stop sign there. So you don't want competing signs.
Right. We don't want to make it confusing, but.
Sure.
We certainly don't want to add to the county's budget either with Sheriff sitting there getting. Okay, this isn't being recorded, right? Okay, hold on. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you state your name and address? I'm sorry.
David Box.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. We don't want to come back in a week. Okay, anybody else here who'd like to talk in favor of this project? Hearing seeing none, is there anyone here like to talk against this proposal project? You state your name and address, please?
Hi, Dr. Mike Majuli. I live at four, five, four, seven Northwest two twentieth street. That is at the, uh, northwest corner of Meridian and Scott Creek. Uh, so I'd like to begin by providing a little bit of context to the zoning and development of this area. I guess I'll lead with the question, uh, are we allowed to lie in front of you? Is lying okay? If you ask me a question, can I lie to you to get what I want?
I wouldn't recommend it. Well, yeah, I don't think you don't swear him in. I mean, you're not, no, no, you're not sworn in.
Agreed. But it's generally frowned upon. All right, so this property was previously zoned as R two by the previous county master plan before the rezoning, which was approved by the board of county commissioners. Uh, and in twenty twenty-two, this had had a rezoning application prior, uh, where they wanted to switch it from R two to general commercial. Again, the planning commission unanimously, uh, said no, and the applicants withdrew their application before it made it to the board of county commissioners. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, this current rezoning as a P U D with commercial and half acre properties was submitted and unanimously recommended for denial by the planning committee after a significant protest was mounted by the adjacent homeowners uh, concerned about maintaining the rural character of the county, protecting the character of existing residential neighborhoods, the lack of public sanitary sewage, current traffic issues during school hours, blocking roundabouts adjacent to a firehouse, and a warning from Superintendent Dr. Perez, the Deer Creek School Superintendent, that the school district can't keep up with overdevelopment. And to clarify, Eric, has any other rezoning request been entertained by the planning committee or board of county commissioners on the site? No. So at the county commissioners meeting in May of twenty twenty-four, against the unanimous recommendation of you, the planning committee, significant protest by the surrounding homeowners, the incongruity of the master plan, the county commissioners decided to approve the P O D. We, the homeowners most impacted by the change, wanted to understand the reasoning behind undercutting the constituents and ignoring the planning committee. We think the answer is more nefarious than wanting to address housing shortages or as one of the county commissioners has offered, to provide funding for the Oklahoma County Jail. The applicant in this case, Cambridge of Deer Creek, lists three co-managers, John Garrett, Mark Pfeffer, and Jeffrey Van Hoos, all three of whom are listed as political donors to County Commissioner Miles Davidson's political campaign. To be clear, we acknowledge there's no legal wrongdoing in the developers providing the maximum for household donations to political campaigns. But more importantly, Commissioner Davidson has stated in the record that the local.
Sir, can I can I stop here? I appreciate what you're doing and, but what does that have to do with your project? What what about this plan do we need to change or what about this plan that has to be different? I I get what you're doing.
The P U D was approved based on laws.
Okay, but that's not what we're discussing here today. We're discussing the preliminary plot. And I so if you're going to if we're going to talk about the P U D and I'm going to stop you right now, if you have an issue with the plot, then I'd be more than happy to discuss that with you.
So, uh, can he finish though? Just let him finish?
No, because that's not because again, back to and correct me if I'm wrong, we are to just address agenda items. That is not an agenda item.
Well, he's protesting.
I think I understand the meaning of the protest in the number of minutes that you normally allow for each of the acts. However, just to remind you all, the agenda item, the discussion of possible actions, the closing of the denial, the general plan. Issues about zoning as the speaker Nordson, they're going to get through the authority to come in and decide whether the fourth floor is going to be shared and any, uh, protest or any action that people want to take and things to come in, which is separate and this body would have no ability to express any of that. Now, one more thing on the agenda item, this community right now on the ground and and that because of this open, we are limited by what is on the agenda item, which is especially on the other side of the general plan. So that helps you all, but yes, if you have to speak and if you've been given a floor for the protest, um, and protest that in relation to the people, no contest to the, uh, for the decisions and.
Correct, but so if you could.
So how many minutes do we normally give?
It 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 varies, but it's this isn't a question of time. I'll give him as much time as he needs, but this is the question of what is this? The protest has to be in regards to this preliminary plot, okay? Not what happened before, not all the other stuff. So if there's he doesn't like the roads, he doesn't like the directions, he doesn't like, uh, the fact that we're they're going to put a water tank in or something along those lines. We will discuss those all day long with him and give him the time that he needs to do that. But to discuss who voted for who, who donated to who, that's not an agenda item that we're addressing here today. So with that said, back to you, sir, is there anything that you would like to talk to about the general plan?
Sure, so I can show you video of, uh, the corner of Cobell and Meridian that is completely stopped up. The roundabout is completely stopped. There's no traffic coming forth and it's right next to a Deer Creek Fire Station. So as somebody who's been on an ambulance responding to a choking child coming out of my firehouse and seeing a stopped up roundabout twice a day, that's important. Hundred and ninety-nine houses on a hundred and ninety-two acres right next to a school. So that school was K through three because of all of the overcrowding, they're forcing to move that school to a K through four school now. So it's going to have even more kids in it. So I'll remind you that, uh, the superintendent came and talked against this because of the overcrowding. Uh, so in addition to the traffic, we're worried about the sewage. So right next to this now even more crowded school, we're going to have a hundred and ninety-nine houses spraying chemically treated waste into the air. So my house is right downwind of this school, right downwind of this. And I would prefer not to have a sewage tank right next to my house.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
I'd love to speak to any of you further about some of the circumstances around the approval, which the attorney general has the information and we hope to hear that. He hopes that the county commission is going to be held to the same high ethical standards as the state representatives, but I would love to discuss this further with any of you afterwards.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Stick around and and anybody, you can talk to everybody after the meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here who would like to talk against this project? So Eric, I would like to address one thing that he did bring up. The traffic, I mean, again, back to is everything being done to within county regulations for the traffic?
Like I said, when we get into the preliminary plat, if this moves forward, they're going to have to do a traffic impact study. So depending on, right, so depending on the outcome of that study, let's say that this intersection needs to be signaledized. Then that's something that we're going to have to discuss and deal with. If it turns out to where let's say a portion of this road needs to be three lane, where you have one lane in each direction and you have a dedicated turn lane. That's something that we're going to have to discuss. This issue is.
Those conversations all happen at the preliminary plot stage.
Right, because at that point, at that point, they will have submitted that study. That's what they turn in forty-five days before the meeting, so we can review that information and bring up any concerns. It's something that we can deal with beforehand. We try to do that, but if not, then it comes in front of this body for more discussion.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions for Eric?
I do have two. So if I go somewhere or another and it's just my opinion of what is out here, is that you think it's new, being new on the floor? If they met all the, uh, and everything, don't even size the lot. But I personally don't agree that this location is going on, that they should be that small block. Reality wise, if I vote no, will that reflect back on me being new to this?
I'll give you my opinion and my opinion only. Theoretically, when we vote, our opinions have no value in this. It is, does this meet or not meet the criteria of the zoning and the laws? And there are going to be times that you're probably going to have to vote for things that you wouldn't you wouldn't agree with, no matter how many hours we spend at the board talking about that. So. Right, correct. So is that clarified? All right.
So just for the record, this meets all of your criteria, like Mr. Box said.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other conversation? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve, second item number five.
Motion to approve.
Second, roll call Eric.
Mr. Murray, Mr. Jewel, Mr. DeFuria.
No.
Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson and Mr. Foster.
Thank you. All right. Item number six, discussion of possible action to receive the December twenty twenty-four fee fund and expense report. My usual joke, did we make any money, Eric?
Actually, we did. Uh, if you recall in the last meeting, we were in the red. Uh, so we're just about five thousand dollars in the black. Now, we'll see. We'll see if that holds, but that's where we are.
Rich. So that's why the Christmas party was canceled. All right.
They recycled last year's candy board.
All right, before I lose control, I'll entertain a motion to receive the fee fund report.
So moved.
Second, roll call Eric.
Mr. Murray, Mr. Jewel, Mr. DeFuria, Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Mr. I mean, excuse me, Ms. Patterson.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Foster.
All right. Yeah, item number seven, new business. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, section three, one, one point nine, new business is defined as any manner not known about or which could not have reasonably been foreseen prior to the time of posting of this agenda. Eric, any new business?
No, sir.
All right, now hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Roll call Eric.
Mr. Murray, Mr. Jewel, Mr. DeFuria.
Yes.
Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson.
Yeah.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Uh, if you just give me a few minutes here to get the floodplain management information.
Sir, you'll turn this off?
Yes.
That is going to be the hardest thing we do on this board. There's lots of times that I don't agree with that.
Right, and once and once it's. And and.
And and the other thing too, I'm watching the color.
Yeah, well, well, he's, I mean, and he's talking, it's, you know, it's not us talking, like, let him talk.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Oh, well.
Oh, I can have a little bit of time to say and see what you guys. I'll I'll be I'll be even easier. I need to I need to expand on the board some more. Because that's why I asked last, actually, I just don't know.
Get up, I went to page fifty.
Right.
You know? And 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 if there is.
And the other kind of times that having. Having, sorry, having Lisa here is if there is something that we're not sure about or we've never talked about or we've never been there, that's all we go to Lisa and we ask her. Now, she's not understand, she doesn't have a legal opinion, she didn't.
Well, I kind of figured it was.
And one last thing too, this is only half month here, if I've been made half a month. We we never give advice on this. But it's like one time a person up here was on the board and on the board said, well, you guys should do. We never say that. Now, once we adjourn and say whatever you want, but then this official.
Are we ready, Bill Eric?
That's just I'm not part of this, can I stay at third? I need you to, you tell me.
Yeah, you talk to the.
Okay, all right.
We have had to come back. All right, okay. All right, let's call this two seventeen. This is the Oklahoma County Floodplain Management Board, one two oh four, one. One list listed at one thirty, starting at two seventeen, excuse me, January sixteen, twenty twenty-five. July, so this meeting was posted on January thirteen, twenty twenty-five. Call the order, Eric, roll call.
Yes, the members of the floodplain management board are Mr. Rob Murray, Mr. Charles DeFuria.
Yeah.
Mr. Rob Talbot and Ms. Denise Patterson.
Here.
All right, so let's go back to the approval of the minutes of a previous meeting which was held on July eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Everybody have a copy of the minutes? Anything we need to change? Hearing hearing seen done, uh, and motion to approve the minutes from the previous July eighteen meeting.
So moved.
Second, roll call Eric.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria.
Yes.
Mr. Talbot and Ms. Patterson.
Yes.
Okay, item number five, discussion of possible actions to approve by tonight and development pertinent, B C, twenty twenty-four, national rate, Eric?
Yes, uh, the item before you today is located off of Santa Fe and Waterloo Road. So to the east of this is actually the city limits of Edmund. And if I'm not mistaken, as you go south, there's the city of Edmund as well. What they are proposing in this particular case is is been in front of this board or similar type of applications to where they want to create a pond there. The pond is going to be twelve acres in size and they want to utilize this pond for agricultural purposes. Uh, from my understanding, he wants to have cattle out there, so it's part of a farming type of, um, operation. And so what we're here to discuss as far as the floodplain development is, are they meeting our regulations in regards to this particular? in regards to this particular, uh, project? So typically in the past, I know we've had discussions of what FEMA requires and what they don't require. And so one of the things that's a little bit different in this particular case is typically when you're in the floodway, like you are with this particular application, you will have to do a clomer, which is a conditional letter of map revision. And what that is, is basically the engineer is submitting all of these calculations through FEMA first, and they will go through the process of reviewing everything and give their stamp of approval to move forward the application, and then they will typically come here second. What is different in this particular case is all of the floodplain, uh, that would be affected potentially is owned by the applicant. And so the conditional letter of map revision, that process doesn't have to be followed. And I've contacted FEMA and the, uh, state NFIP coordinator, who's the National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator, to make sure that we're following all the requirements. And so since all the activity is on his property, and the effect that could occur up and downstream is on his property, that is something that the applicant doesn't have to go through. Now, with that said, um, we still have our oversight as far as our floodplain regulations before they move forward. But if this is something that is approved, one thing that they will have to do is they will have to go through the letter of map revision process. So it's very similar as the clomer, but the difference is, is they take the engineering calculations of what has actually been built. And then they submit that information to FEMA to make sure that the floodplain maps in the area are changed accordingly, and they will give their approval as well. So I wanna make sure that that step is accounted for, because it's something that is still required, even though it's all on his particular piece of property. The document that I handed out to you guys before is the staff report, and I thought that would be helpful just to kinda go through the process of discussing the application. Um, I will going to provide, uh, some of the exhibits here that we have. You can kinda see this particular creek that comes in here is Oak Creek. Uh, the creek that you just see on the edge of the drawing to the west is Chisholm Creek. And these creeks basically go north to south, I'm sorry, south to north, and they come together in Logan County. These are the drawings that to the applicant, and it may be difficult to see from where you're sitting, but there are some blue and green lines that basically give you the existing conditions that are out there as far as the floodplain maps. Where the, I'll go back one slide real quick, where the hundred-year floodplain sits, which is the blue, where the floodway sits and the five-hundred-year floodplain, which is the orange. It's indicated on this map as well. There's just more information on this map as far as contour lines when we're reviewing this. Uh, but if you can see, unfortunately, I don't think you can, but if you can see the green lines, the darker blue line there, that's just pointing all the existing conditions that are currently out there today. If you look at the staff report, if you go, you can look at the, I guess, bottom half of, of the, uh, staff report on page three, and it gives you a quick explanation of, of what some of these maps are showing you. But on page four, is probably the most important piece of information, is the hundred-year floodplain elevation comparison, and, and that's what these exhibits are for. Uh, this exhibit here is going to be showing the existing conditions. Uh, it's the hundred-year, the, uh, water, where it's gonna be flowing at, what the, uh, conditions are at the stations that have been pointed out in this particular, uh, exhibit. So you can see most of these elevations, these water surface elevations, that's what W S E L stands for, water surface elevations. Uh, that is what it is today, are the current conditions. Uh, if you go to the right, which is gonna be this next slide, uh, you can kinda see how this changed, where, where they're putting this pond in specifically. Uh, and you can see where the dam is there. But you can see how the water surface elevations are affected. You can compare the existing to the proposed conditions. And so you can see really, like many of the cases that we've had recently under the Flood Plane Management Board, this is really compensatory storage, uh, so it is helping, assisting the floodplain, uh, with, by adding this pond in that area there to where it just has additional storage. And so if you go through some of these stations that are there, you can look, after you get through the pond, uh, there is a considerable amount of water surface elevation that is lost. So as an example, towards the end there, you've got an elevation of ten twenty-six, to where once the project is completed, you're in the neighborhood of ten twenty-one. So the, the, uh, amount of water that's going through the area there, once the project is completed, is substantially less. So that is assisting the floodplain to what it is today. So I just wanted to provide that information number so you can kinda understand, um, a little bit clearer. Dean Colita, he is the engineer on the project. He's the one that has, uh, done the study and provided the information. He's, he's here as well to answer any questions. But I just wanted to give you a basic understanding of, of what they're trying to do in this particular case.
Do you have any objections?
No, we, we did have some concern, and we got with Dean. Uh, the county engineer was concerned with the backwater, so like I said, this, this goes from east to west, back to north. And so I don't think you can re, you can't really see it on any of these maps. But the concern was, is as you're putting in this pond, the amount of backwater is going to be pushed back towards Santa Fe. Uh, there was a little bit of concern there, but there is a significant drop-off from the box that is underneath Santa Fe. So there's a, if I'm not mistaken, two or three-foot drop from that box that's on Santa Fe as you get onto the applicant's property. So that, once he explained to, that to us, that makes sense as far as his numbers and, and some of this question that we had as far as the amount of backwater. So the amount of backwater there is, there's enough drop-off there that it, it wouldn't affect any of the property or east. Uh, if you're familiar with this area, as you go back to the east, you get back into Oak Tree Golf Course. So obviously, uh, that's something that we were concerned about, but he answered that question for us. So as far as the calculations that were submitted to us, we didn't have any issues. And like I said, the questions that we had, he answered.
You have a question, sir? Hearing none, is there anyone here who'd like to talk favorably to this project?
Dean Colita, Civil and Environmental Consultants, forty-seven hundred Gladiator Parkway, Suite one oh one, uh, representing the applicant, where the civil engineers in the project did the flood study for this. And I, everything I agree with Eric, what he's saying, you know, this is gonna basically help this area out. You know, the substantial water surface decrease, once we build the pond, is gonna do nothing but be like a floodplain management, uh, that the owner is gonna pay for, that the county would not have to, which is great, cuz usually these projects are expensive when Oklahoma City and some of the other cities do it. So it's a really good benefit for this area in general, cuz it's gonna store a lot of floodplain water. As it continues to develop to the east in Edmund, you know, they're gonna bring more water down. It'll really help out to the north, cuz it's gonna hold all that water back. So it's really a good floodplain management tool, uh, and it's, of course, it's for a different purpose for agricultural uses, but it will impact area in a positive way, so be happy to answer any questions you have.
I got a question. So, uh, what is he gonna do with the dirt that he pulls out? Is he gonna put it on his property or haul it on somewhere?
They're hauling it off. Um, there are several projects in the area that need dirt, so they're gonna basically just be transferring over there to other, other projects. And people who need dirt in the area, they'll, they'll come and just pick it up as, as they need. It'll take a while to, uh, get rid of it, because it's quite a bit of dirt, but that's the plan. So it may take a while to get, to get, uh, you know, get rid of the dirt, but they're gonna kinda get rid of it as they, as they dig. Yes, sir. So if we are able to get approval, uh, we already have other approvals in place through all the other agencies. So if we're able to get approval tonight, uh, or today, we would likely start digging here in the next couple of weeks, uh, once we have final approval permit to this. And so it'll start the project then, and it'll kinda slowly dig dirt out and try to get rid of everything as, as it happens. So it's, it's gonna be a pretty lengthy, uh, excavation, just cuz the size of the, the depth of the pond there. But, um, you know, we're gonna have, we have stockpile areas, um, with erosion protections and everything already in place for that. So it's just gonna kinda be a process of getting the dirt, uh, removed, um, as, as need happens through other projects around the project, around that property.
Just real quick, what are the agricultural things that you're gonna be doing? I mean-
He, he, he has a lot of horses and cattle and that type of, uh, you know, other, other animals, but those are two biggest ones, is horse and cattle, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody here like to talk against this project? Hearing, seeing none, is there anything you wanted to add, Eric?
I was just gonna say to Mr. DeFuria's question, uh, let's just say that he wanted to keep the dirt on his property. He can, as long as it's not stored in the flood pond. So he could, he could park all that to the south if he wanted to. That's no problem, obviously. Like Mr. Colita's, Colita stated, um, the only issue with that is if you're gonna leave it on your property for a period of time, it has to be stabilized. That's just one of the requirements that is through the state Department of Environmental Quality. Through their OKR ten permit, they have to get a permit from them as well. Uh, so that's kinda what he was talking about as far as leaving the dirt on the property. There's other measures to make sure that if there's any rain events, uh, that pile, none of that silt from that pile gets back into the creek, starts to fill the creek in. So there, there are other things they would have to do, even if he wanted to leave it outside of the floodplain on the property. Press on that, so that dirt stays in place instead of gets transported off somewhere else.
Which you guys obviously oversee at the county.
Right, we go out, um, on these type of projects, like you stated, they're pretty slow-moving projects. I mean, if you had to take a guess, are we talking like a ten-year timeframe? I mean, a lot of times it's just, it's just kind of a guess, cuz-
If one project does happen that's nearby, they may need a lot of dirt, and they happen to the relationships.
Some of these, some of these projects, it, it really just depends. Um, as an example, I, I can't remember if you guys were on the board, but on the east side of the county, uh, the Leacy has a, uh, basically a sand pit where they're pulling out a lot of material from the floodplain there. That project has already been going five, maybe even ten years now. So these projects aren't fast projects.
Okay. Any other questions for Eric? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to approve item number five.
Second.
Roll call, Eric.
Mr. Murray, Mr. DeFuria-
Yes.
Mr.-
Also, and then, and this is done, cuz it doesn't go to the county commissioner, right?
Right, right. We'll just have to make sure Dean does what he's supposed to.
I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah, we know where he lives.
All right, item number six. This was a weird day. All right. New business. In accordance with the Opens Meeting Act, section three one one point nine, new business is defined as any matter not known about, which, or which could have reasonably been foreseen prior to the posting of this agenda. Do we have any new business, Eric?
Yes, sir.
And all in unison, motion to adjourn. Second, second. Roll call.
Mr. Murray, Mr. DeFuria-
Yes.
Mr. Talbot-
Yes.
Ms. Patterson.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Yes, sir.